Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, April 6, 2015. We're in regular session of council. We will begin tonight with a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, also known as the Small Cities Program. We have a sign-in sheet, so if people in the audience have not yet signed in, we would urge you to do so. Our purpose tonight is to talk about the final details for that Small Cities Grant and to see if there are different ideas generated, possible projects for us.
Do you want to allow me? Okay. Essentially, this is an allocation grant from the CDBG. That's the, again, Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Program. Normally, we run about $75,000 for the fiscal year. Of course, we're going to be working for 2015, of course. We have other grants that are out there through CDBG, and there's a little sheet right over there that covers some of them, including, of course, everything from downtown redevelopment, neighborhood revitalization, critical infrastructure, and as well as economic development, infrastructure programs. We do use some of them. We don't use all of them, mostly because some don't fit our package. In this case, every year, it's called an allocation, actually, grant because we get a local amount, about $75,000. Some of that goes into administration of the grant, some of that goes into fair housing education, but the line share goes into any project that we are asking for the public to actually give us input on. In the past, let me see if I can find it here. In the past, some of the systems we've used it for is to offset our lift depot station. This was a lift station, a sewage pump station, Depot Street, to augment some of the pricing that we went through that. Again, it runs about $75,000, so it's not a lot of money. The total price on that was about $375. Previous to that, the 2013 allocation, we did the rehab of Richland Avenue House by Station Two. This was actually to get the house out of mothballs and put it in for low and moderate income housing, which we have turned over the management to Metropolitan Housing Authority. Previous to that was actually to help leverage some money for the Columbus Road and Lancaster Street projects. And the last one, that was 2012, 2011, just for example, is the Grover Street Slip Repair, which is a lot more than, you know, was quite a bit of money to do that. But the fact is, it's always used in conjunction with other grants to leverage some money into it. It's not, we usually use it for infrastructure, but again, the point of this public hearing is to get input. There will be two other meetings. In the past, we only had three. We had a public hearing, two public hearings, but in between, they're asking for some strategy information. Let me see if I can find the dates on that. I think the next one, the one that's going to happen is at the April 16 Planning Commission, just before that at 12 o'clock. That will be up here Thursday, April 16, at 12. Essentially, we're looking for more input in terms of the stakeholders, other organizations that might be interested in it. Really, that's kind of a new format, so the structure is not really determined, but the idea is to get more information, more input. In the past, again, we've spent money for neighborhood revitalization. Some of it is administered by HAPCAP, that's Hocking Athens Perry Community Action. And this year, we're going to do it our own, ourselves, because, as I say, it's a small amount and we can handle it. One of the caveats I have of this, whether we actually move forward on this, is the fact that, which I received today, April 6, is that the allocation money, which is $75,000, would come, could possibly come out of our revolving loan fund. We have an Economic Development CDBG revolving loan fund. It's administered by the Economic Development Council, Business Remix, if you go to their website there. We, it's got constraints in terms of how much money you can lend per employee. It says, basically, they, in the February 2 letter they sent us, they said if it was an excess amount of money, they would ask us to pull money out of that. So in other words, this allocation money will not really come directly from the state, but through our revolving loan fund. The statement here today we received is, "The city of Athens is determined to have a stagnant and combined economic development, downtown revitalization, and micro CBG loan in excess of $100,000." We actually read about $140,000, I believe. The city is required to allow, okay, 50% up to $100,000 of its revolving loan fund balance prior to end conjunction with the community development program. So in other words, if I read this correctly, we'd have to take some of our money, revolving loan fund money, and throw it into the pot as well. With that said, I'll take information. As I say, there's signup sheet there, as well as a synopsis of some of the other CDBG programs through Ohio Development Services. I think I covered everything there. Questions from council, questions from the public?
Okay. We do have a June 20 deadline, is that correct?
Yes.
For the submission of the application?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Let's see if I can find it on this thing. Yes, I believe it's June 26, it says.
Okay.
But again, we have at least two more public hearings to check on that and get something squared away. Questions from the public? Suggestions from the public? As I say, there'll be two other opportunities. The noon one, that's in conjunction with the Planning Commission, is to bring the Planning Commission at least present. The next one, I don't have a date for, but I'm sure we'll be working it pretty soon, put it into the mix fairly soon.
And Mayor, just one other question. I may have missed it in your conversation. Does the city have a possible project for this year that they're considering? Not to thwart any other suggestions, but to hear what the city is thinking.
We've been looking around. Essentially, some of Franklin Avenue needs to be revamped. Again, it comes down, that would not cover half the things we need to do, or even a quarter of the things we need to do on Franklin Avenue. But if we start looking at that, saying, can we actually match it and leverage it to other grants, that would be where we'd want to go. There are, there's some discussion about some of the park activities, but we're not sure what we want to do with that yet. Again, it's open, pretty much wide open. You know, and it's actually a question whether we want to, you know, raid our revolving loan fund, even though it's not really that active. It's one of those tools in the tool chest for businesses that we'd like to keep available. The county has a parallel one as well, revolving loan fund, CDBG revolving loan fund. They have a little bit more money in their war chest, but the fact is, if somebody comes along and says, "I need X amount and Y amount," maybe we can pull it together. This comes down, again, it says, revolving loan fund by nature is that you loan it out, you get it back, and you still have the capital to reinvest later down the line. If you raid it for the allocation, then it's gone. It's a one-shot deal.
And is that state letter indicating that if we apply for $75,000, the entire $75,000 will be taken from the revolving loan fund, or it might be a some percentage?
If I, if I'm reading this, my interpretation is that it would take 50%. You'd have to at least match it with 50%.
Okay.
So $75,000, that's $350,000, I guess.
Thirty-seven.
Three thousand, $3,500 or something, $35,000.
Thirty-seven.
But that's my interpretation. And again, I just received the letter today. It's pretty much mirrors the other letter we got in February, saying the same thing, but they weren't sure. This was, we asked for clarification. I sent my executive assistant up last week to kind of sound out the lay of the land, and I asked for a written, you know, description of what I could expect to happen.
Okay.
And this would be a discussion with the Economic Development Council, because I hate to, you know, pull one of their tools away if they have a need for it. But these are, and again, if we don't find a good project, then it doesn't move forward. Really, at this point, I believe this is on the agenda, is to ask authorization to apply. That doesn't mean we have to actually sign the contract when done, or the grant when done.
Mayor President?
Yes.
I have an idea, as another idea, just to throw into the pot, is we're, you know, the redevelopment is going to happen on West Union Street, and I don't know if we would want to look at sidewalkscape, or new lighting, or something that ties in with the rest of our uptown area. As a, I don't know if that's already being considered, but that might be an interesting project.
It might be difficult for that. And I say that because one of the other things that we're asking for clarification, as well as how they're going to parse out, it has to be directed towards areas of low and moderate income by, and in the past, they've used the census blocks, which are pretty wide segments. They're using the, what is it, community service surveys, which are yearly now, and they actually were implying that some of the portions, looking at street by street, we're trying to find out what yardstick is available, what they're going to use. It sounds like they're going to try and, you know, fine-tuning it, or making it a little bit more granular where it is and where it isn't. So that'd be a consideration. There were times that we couldn't use it in certain areas because the ratio of low and moderate income is below 50%. I think it's cut off. So we'll take it under advisement, and we'll look at the census block and ask for that interpretation.
Gotcha.
So it's always a possibility.
Would that restriction affect any one particular part of town?
I'm thinking south side. It sounds like, I can't think of any area on the south side that did qualify by that yardstick.
Yeah, that's, that would be the issue right there. And again, I've, it's been a while since I looked at census block. When I first got in office, there were some portions that were dropped out, but then in the 2010 census, we were able to move some of the things around, some of the sections around, but I haven't looked at it since.
Curtis.
I doubt the south side or university estates and smaller subdivisions of that nature would actually qualify.
We were thinking Curtis and Hooper, possibly.
Curtis and Hooper? Hmm. Yeah. I guess it depends on how small a block they want it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Wasn't it, Mayor, wasn't it the house on 258 or 256 Richland Avenue? Is that voluntary? CBD?
Yes. CBG.
So that's south side. So there are areas within the south side area that could be used towards rehabbing that house.
And actually, they were very favorable for that because of the structure of it. Eventually, really what we're doing was making a house available for low and moderate income through Metropolitan Housing, which I think was probably one of the better things to do. Again, the other one is to leverage some of the other grants that are out there, because they require a match, and this, depending on what the grant is, some of them fall out of, this is a match that we can use, in some cases you can't. And again, it comes down to a lot of the fine print on how we do that. And that's, as we move forward, we start whittling it down, what's possible, what's not possible. Questions?
Questions or comments?
Other questions from the audience, from the citizens?
From the public.
Suggestions? Okay. Don't forget to sign in the sign sheet. And as I say, these are some good background pieces of information of what the other programs are, and most of our large programs are done by CD, HAPCAP. We've been actually, in the past couple of years, the CHIP grant has been pooled in with the county and Nelsonville, and again, it's part of the coalescence and way to make it streamline, I believe. The downside of that, it loses a little bit of resolution if you're going for a pool like that.
Well, thank you for moving this forward. We'll consider this public hearing now closed to move on with the regular session of council. Now, the first item of business will be establishing the quorum, in which we have all members, council members, present tonight. Next item of business is disposition of the minutes from the meeting, the special session held March 9, and the regular session held March 16. And we have a motion to approve those minutes, please.
I so moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, the disposition of the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. We do have one communication from Sherrod Brown's office, and this was directed to city council in terms of the resolution that was passed earlier this year about the Global Food Security Act, and he's passed our concerns along to the legislative assistant in his office, who monitors foreign policy issues. And so, thanks us for sending correspondence to him about that. Any other communications?
I have some.
Okay.
You don't have, that's it?
I do have, I have a list of three or four. I could move on with some of those and see which overlap. Tonight, just so audience members and TV viewers are aware, thanks to Scott Thompson, our IT person, and Debbie Walker, our clerk of council, city council is moving on to a new Gmail system, with the major purpose of that being that we can try and move towards paperless agenda and ordinances. You might see, some of you have probably gathered copies when you've come in here before, and on a particular nights where we have 19 or 20 ordinances, the stack of papers gets quite thick. So we have ChromePads or iPhones in front of us here tonight, and we're working with it for so, for the first time, so fumbling a little bit. It's a new experience for all of us, so thanks for your patience with it. This week and next week, we have several items coming up. One of them being the Northwest Bike Path Spur is, the city of Athens is going to be hosting a tree planting, and that's tomorrow, April 7. And if people are interested.
Why it doesn't pour rain?
Right.
And thunder.
Right. So stay tuned for the weather forecast, too, but Ron Lucas at 592-340 is the person to contact. We're City Hall, I'm sure we'll have updates on that. But I think we have, what, 1,000 trees?
I thought close to 7,000.
Oh, 7,000. We need lots of volunteers. We're very ambitious. The, Ohio University had an article in the newspaper where they are moving forward with several master plans, one for the university at large, one for the utility plans for the university, as well as for the ridges. And this week, the, or excuse me, next week, the Ohio University will be holding an open house about that master plan, along with a presentation, and that's April 14 at the community center at 7:30 at night. There'll be one the following day at Nelson Commons on April 15, and I believe that one is midday. The city of Athens also has a spring cleanup week, April 20 through 24. Details of that are on the webpage, so please check that. I believe that residents can set out, as long as they're in bags, as many bags of goods. Larger trash, furniture, metal can go over to our yard on West State Street.
West State Street.
Where we'll have dumpsters, and people will be able to clean up in that way. It's not going to include tires or paint. That's going to be at a hazardous waste pickup on July 11. So the hazardous waste pickup will be later this year. And those are the items that I have so far.
Okay. Well, you covered quite a bit. The master plan, as you said, was the 14th and the 15th. One starts, says, open house at 6:30 at the community center. That's the 14th. And the 15th will be at Nelson Reception Hall. That starts at 11:30 with an open house. But I assume that so you can look at some of their models and daisies and things like that. Then the actual presentation starts at 12 for one, and the one at the community center at 7:30. You're right about the last week, of course, is April 20 to 24, is the spring cleanup. You can put in as many bags as you want, but if you put something outside a bag, you're going to be charged by the cubic yard, $25 for the first cubic yard, $3.25 for additional. If you have something you want to dispose of that you don't want to pay for, you take it down to the West State Street Service Garage. This is going towards the ball fields at that point. That's between 7:30 and 7:00 PM, 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and that's without charge. You do need some ID to prove that you're a citizen of the city, so you can get in there and do that. Yeah, I'm not sure what's going to happen with the tree planting tomorrow, because it's supposed to rain. The US, the Tree City USA Awards will be the April 29. It'll be on the ridges. It's an all-day event, I guess. We're going to have a tree conference there, tours of the area, presentations, everything from the chestnut trees to community, CFI, and community orchards. This weekend, I believe, which is the 11th, will be the Kid Fest. I think it's at Walter Field House, between 10 and 1. That's put on by, of course, the Athens County Children's Services, which they also want you to wear blue, April 8. So if you're in your office and you can get everybody to wear blue, get a photo and send it to them, they'd be happy to see your support.
Child abuse awareness.
What?
Is that for child abuse awareness?
Yes, child abuse awareness. Sorry. I guess I assumed that, because I went to the pinwheels and Lenny did a approximation, the county commission did a approximation. I also know that this Saturday, for Athens County residents, Great American Cleanup at Wayne National Forest, they'll be picking up tires. I guess they've got enough money to pick up 1,200 tires, and after that, they're done. No charge for that, but do not bring your tractor tires and anything over 54 inches or 16 inches in width. And they could, they'd like them to be free of dirt and mud, so, and none, no accepting from tire shops and dealers, but I guess it's the idea is to get them out of the area. Let's see. Last, let's see, I got a letter today as well from Ohio History Connection. It's addressed to me, saying, "I'm pleased to inform that your city's application to conduct a feasibility study to determine potential usage of the Athens National Guard Armory has been awarded for the fiscal year 2015, the certified local government grant, the amount of $12,638." And again, this is to look at the possibilities of what's going to go on. I know some of the grant will require a match, as well as work from our city planner, who did most of the work to put this together, so I have to give kudos to him. So that looks like we've been awarded a little bit more to move the ball forward. And I believe that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Any other communications from council? Okay. We'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Do we have any other reports, Mayor Wile?
No.
Okay. And Law Director Elias? Okay. We will move on. Before we begin the ordinances of the second readings, what we would like to do tonight is entertain a motion to amend the agenda. The purpose of this being to move one item, other communications from later on in the report to, up to the beginning, before we read the ordinances, so that we can have a special presentation.
I so moved.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, the motion carries. So what we'll do is, right now, we have Barbara Kostaric, who is here to present to us tonight a brief presentation, and this is about Live Healthy, Love Athens.
I can take one. You don't mind.
First of all, thank you so much. And thanks to Mike for his effort on getting me on the schedule. So I'm here to tell you about my idea to have children's artwork on the flags uptown. A quick history, I am on the Kids Committee for Live Healthy Appalachia, and every time they have a health summit, we have a billboard contest. And as you can see up front, we get all this fabulous artwork, but we can only pick three. And last year, we only had two billboards. So we kept saying every year, what can we do with this artwork? So we try and show it. Finally, I was in Manitou Springs, Colorado, this last summer, and I get out of the car and I look up and I went, whoa, they have beautiful flags for all the kids' artwork. And I thought, wouldn't that be neat in Athens? So I came back, called the mayor, talked to Paul. I went to AMAC, talked to them in November. I went to Uptown Business, talked to them, and now I'm back. AMAC gave me their backing. Uptown Business sounded pretty excited about it. So the reason we said live healthy, or live well, whichever wording, love Athens, because we thought we'd have that printed on the banner, and then the kids would have to come up with all the things they love about Athens. You know, why do you live here? Why do you love it? And you start thinking of all the things you love, the farmer's market, the museums. So it would be the essence of Athens. Love Athens. Nothing's better than kids' artwork here. And the other one, the live well or live healthy, was thought because, as most people know, childhood obesity numbers have skyrocketed. Along with that goes type 2 diabetes in adolescents, which was unheard of before. So we have a problem, and as a community, we could say, hey, we do care about the health or well-being of our citizens. You know, we could make a statement. The other thing I said was, it's an investment in our future. The children are our future. They're their, you know, the future council people, future teachers. And if you put their artwork uptown, that really tells you you care about them, that you're proud of. So, of course, I love kids anyways. And to help uptown businesses, the lady in Manitou Springs who told me all about it, they've been doing it 20 years. She said it works great for uptown businesses, because wherever you have kids' artwork, who do you have coming along? Parents, family. So they do cards. They get somebody to donate printing, and they have the kids' artwork in the uptown shops. So if parents come up and they want to buy cards, they have to go into the businesses. So they said, they make enough profit that they repay, or they pay for all their banners each year. So anyways, the cost to the city would just be to hang the banners, because my husband and I decided we will fund it through our family fund, or if it gets a little out of hand, we'll get a lot, we'll get friends. Everybody I've talked to just thrilled about it. So here's the total number of flags uptown. They're all down here. There's a total of 32. The total, main intersections have 14, and the side streets have a total of 18, because there's like three on the side streets. So the next page would be, we would have a contest, and it would run probably the fifth, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, the ninth, or fifths, you know, we'd decide. But if you look there, it would talk to the kids. We really got it down pat on, and you can see that the artwork had to be bright, bold, had to tell a story. It's a little bit different than regular art, because you have to see it from a distance. So this is just a sample form that we would have, and the kids would, you know, be able to enter the contest. The last one was the estimate for the cost of banners. Manitou Springs had a much lower estimate, but they redo theirs every year, so they don't do a high-quality banner. And I couldn't get a one made, because it would be like $100 and some dollars, but I made a little one. So the idea is, they'd be very bright colors, and it would say, we would have the printing done. We learned that the first time. The printing would be on there, live healthy, love Athens, however you want to print it. But it would be done on a special high-quality, and this is a little sample, a high-quality banner. And I'll pass this around, because it's really nice. And the exciting thing, and this is on a standpoint, they have a new system now where you could paint, or you could have the words written on here, live healthy, love Athens. And then they have this new vinyl that could be printed with the children's artwork, and then it could be removed two years, three years down the line, and just put the new artwork up, which is kind of a neat idea. And she said it works great. She put a little sample on here. So I'm going to pass this around. You can see what a good, whoo! You trip off the side. Good quality.
The banners larger than that, Barb.
Oh, yes. They're huge. They're four feet by two feet.
Okay. Yeah.
They'll be not like what we have over the hours.
They're exactly the same. And Performance Sign has done your replacement flags. So she has all the measurements, and she knows, you know, the quality of it. So anyways, that's my idea. I just think it's kind of a win-win situation, but...
And so council members, any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Patterson?
I have a comment. This is awesome.
You have an idea?
And looking at this, because I've often walked up and down Court Street and looking at, you know, the, where we have the ability to hang banners and whatnot, and they're typically the same ones, which is fine, but this is, adds a whole new flavor to what we'll see in the uptown area. I would just encourage you, and think this would be really cool, if an actual flag could be done, and we'll flag in the flagpole in front of the city building.
Councilmember Canterbury?
Yeah, first off, and I've heard this for the third time. I think it's a matter of time. Several things. I was at the meeting when we talked with Service Safety Director Mosley, and she also had told us that she would not have a problem with the city crews taking the flags down and reinstalling these, and then, when the time comes, was doing the reverse on it.
Right.
I think the time project, or the time factor that comes in, is that it has to deal with bounty on the bricks. It'll be up around that time. It'll be up around that time. Essence of Athens, so it brings that into play. I'm just excited about it. I thought it was a very good proposal that you had talked about, and, you know, I hope that all members get behind this.
Right. And, you know, it was talked about that it would, they would just be up in the summer, maybe, you know, just to brighten up the uptown a little bit. I just think it'd be neat. You could have a little ceremony for all the winters. I had hoped to do a different child on each side of the sign, so we could have like 60 kids, but the cost got really out of control, because you have to scan every single one. So she said it would be a lot cheaper if she could do the same child on each side, you know, same picture on each side, which makes sense.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
And again, similar to Member Canterbury, it's nice to see it again, since we were both at the AMAC meeting, which you presented. And to confirm what Barbara said, AMAC wasn't in support of the project, and we think it's a win-win overall, so I support the idea. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson.
Barb, I really appreciate when a community member has a great idea and comes to council and shares that with us, and shares their enthusiasm, because that makes us, you know, really appreciate also what we do up here, but just the positiveness we, you know, it will overflow into the community all over the place. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. But everybody I've talked to gets all excited. They're like, oh, that's a great idea. Not that they're tired of the old flags. You know, those flags, no one can remember when they were put up. Somebody said 2,000. Didn't she say in the meeting? Somebody said...
I think it was.
Like 2,000. So they've been there a while. They've been replaced, but...
Well, thank you so much for coming tonight.
The mayor.
Oh, the mayor, wow.
Since I have to deal with the administration part of it. So you're estimating that this would be, the contest would occur. Is it going through the AMAC, or who's the contest judges, I guess? Because in theory, AMAC is in charge of that.
Well, remember, one year you were a judge for the billboard.
Yes, I was. And they were nice, billboards, yes.
I think what we decided after doing the billboard contest, we, I have a group of artists, we tried to get a group of artists together to judge. We had 20 of us the last time, which makes it fair. And we asked that they don't put, their names would not be on the banners. No last names on the banner. You know, we just put their first name and their age. We might now want to do that if they're going to be up for a couple of years. But anyways, I think you could get a nice panel to judge. There's a lot of artists in town.
And is the expectation for them to be up how long?
Well, they had talked about maybe summer, have it up, you know, just brighten up uptown for the summer.
A lot of kids go away in the summer. Might be nice to have it up through part of the school year, when all the visitors come.
I would have it up all year, if it was up to me, but...
Well, again, the reason why I'm asking, because really, we have a banner system, of course, that one banner across Court Street, and that uses a high, you know, high demand, I should say. So the question is, are we going to be petitioned by various other organizations to say, oh, we want our banners up, you know, two weeks from now, four weeks from now? I did ask at the staff what the cost might be, and I got a range from, it might take a couple hours to put them all up, but I suspected the second cost was, the second dialoger was with the guys who actually put them up, and they said it might take all day to position a boom truck to do all that. And again, that's where the, how often they change would be the question. I think it's a good idea. I like it, but I just, I'm trying to figure out the details, because that's where it'll come out. Okay, so, sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the administration for supporting this.
Yeah.
And your yellow one's right here.
Yes.
No doubt.
And if you don't mind, I need to leave. I have to, I'm going to Haiti tomorrow morning.
Whoa! Yeah. So... Okay, thank you. We'll now be having ordinances for second reading and then some for first reading. We have a total of about 19 ordinances tonight. The reason there's such a high number, particularly for the first readings, is that we have three events coming up this summer. The Boogie on the Bricks, the Ohio Brew Week, and each of the, and there may be one other one. And what happens with each of these is that we have ordinances to provide a glass-free zone, to suspend the noise ordinance, and then to allow vending, peddling, and soliciting to go on for each of the events. So that's why you'll see the series of them. The second ordinances that are up for reading, we normally just read the title, we have no discussion, unless there is an amendment, as we do with one of them tonight. And then on the third ones, where we'll, the third reading of the ordinances, where we'll be voting, then there will be some summary, and then the vote taken for them. So the ordinances for second reading, 2415. An ordinance authorizing design and preliminary engineering of the South Side Bridges Project, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 2615. This is an ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the West Union Street Infrastructure Project and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 2815 is an ordinance amending ordinance 12214, the fringe benefits package for non-union employees, introduced by Councilmember Reisman.
Madam President, I move to amend ordinance 2815.
Second.
The reason for the, my request to amend it is that through an oversight on my part, I didn't realize that a sentence that should have been in Section C had been omitted, and that the amended version puts that sentence there, which reads, "Employees may receive pay increases at the first of each year as established by council ordinance." That was in Section B, as it should be, but it somehow didn't make it to Section C. I apologize for that. And I realized this would put us back to a first reading.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 2815. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the ordinance has been amended and read, considered read for the first time. Thank you, Councilmember Rosen. Our ordinances for first reading, 2915, is an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Union, Washington, and State Streets on Saturday, June 20th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. On Sunday, June 21st, 2015, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. So each of these ordinances for closing the streets for the events has several that goes with it, so I'll just, they're self-explanatory. Obviously, this ordinance has to do with closing the street from June 20th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. for Boogie on the Bricks. Now, yes, that's right, Saturday, June 20th, to Sunday for the 1:00 a.m. closure.
And thank you, realizing that I had this in reverse order. We had ordinances for second reading. I might clarify that all the ordinances we're reading now are for first reading, as the introduction, and so there will be a brief summary of them each time here.
Right.
Thank you. Ordinance 3015 is an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival on Saturday, June 20th, to 1:00 a.m. Sunday, June 21st, 2015, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Obviously, we establish a glass-free drinking zone for safety purposes.
Okay. Ordin, yes, Mayor Wile?
I bring a, for staff, I usually bring up what's going on at council meetings. It was pointed out to me that you changed it in 0140413. Actually, the glass-free zone could actually be designated by a service safety director. So just so you know, it's good to reinforce it, but at the same time, it might not, it might not be necessary to put this ordinance in in the future. Basically, it's in 90604, Section B 3, stating, "Glass-free zone means a portion of the city designated by such, such by the service safety director for a purpose of maintaining public health and safety during special events." So you don't really have to add that. And I know it's nice to reinforce that, at the same time, it'd knock back at least three extra ordinances that you don't have to do.
So maybe we just remind folks when they come requesting for the event, and just remind them that that's already on the books.
That's no problem.
And so one less ordinance for us in the future on some of these special events.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Okay. Ordinance 3115 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on Saturday, June 20th to Sunday, June 21st, 2015, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Obviously, the noise, we do have to suspend, because it does, you can hear it blocks away. So that is one thing that we do agree to suspend for these events.
Ordinance 3215 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, June 20th, and Sunday, June 21st, 2015, during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. So we do actually have vending within the closure on the street, and that's not a normal activity here in Athens, and you do have to receive a special permit for that. So that's what this ordinance is about.
And if I'm understanding from the text of this, prospective vendors do need to come to the, to obtain that license to the code enforcement office by June 18th, so several days before it goes into effect. Ordinance 3315, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and Carpenter on Saturday, July 18th, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to midnight for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
So again, we're just kind of repeating for this event what's going on, and though this is a different section of the street.
Okay. Ordinance 3415 is an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Ohio Brew Week event, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Same glass-free that we won't be doing next year.
Orders 3515, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on July 18th, 2015, for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
The only thing I would say different about this is the location of the stage, which is a little bit closer to a neighborhood, other than the downtown neighborhood, uptown neighborhood. So that would be the only difference, is that Carpenter and Court.
Ordinance 3615, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, July 18th, 2015, during the Ohio Brew Week event, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. And they would need to be there probably, what, several days ahead of time on that one to have their permits, the vendors. Yes.
It's like the 16th, isn't it?
16th.
Section 2.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 3715, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Union and Washington on Saturday, August 8th, 2015, from noon to midnight, for the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. If I'll recall, this is the fundraiser for the food pantries in southeastern Ohio. And again, this is a little bit different section of the street as well, Union to Washington.
Okay.
And...
Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, just a quick comment, and maybe we can collectively help remind each other. I think there was going to be a sale date beginning for the tickets, July, was it July?
June 1st.
June 1st?
I believe it was June 1st.
June 1st, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Butler. And they do sell out quickly. Ordinance 3815, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser on Saturday, August 8th, 2015, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. We'll move on. Okay. Ordinance 3915 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on August 8th, 2015, during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
I think we'll move on on that as well.
Okay. And then ordinance 4015 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Friday, June 5th, August 7th, and September 25th, 2015, for a cruise inn, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. The cruise inns are something that's occurred here in Athens for quite some time. There's usually vintage vehicles that people are allowed to walk around and talk to the owners. It's a little social event for people who are, who enjoy cars and those kinds of things.
There's actually, there's three of them. Last one, September 25th. There's actually usually another one or two that is not on the city streets. Usually, sometimes it ends up on Brew Week down at the Depot area, I believe, and sometimes even at 4th July, over at the community center. So these people love their cars, and not all vintage, too. I mean, sometimes you get old slots of Corvettes, the latest and greatest in Corvettes, and Fast and Furious spinoffs, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 4115 is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funds from the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, the FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws, as codified 49U.S.C., Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas, and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grants Program and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal acceptance, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to suspend 4115.
Second.
The reason for suspension is, we have already been awarded the funds, but they are waiting for the paperwork, so that then the funds can be sent to us directly. So we want to move that along.
Thank you. We have a motion to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules, and a second for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion has, or the suspension of the rules motion has been passed. Move to adopt 4115.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 4115. Is there any further discussion or comments about this? Mayor Wile?
Um, yes. This was brought forward through Michael Lockman, a transit director for Athens Public Transit. The award was actually February 22nd. The question went back, it's a small amount of money, about $7,755, was whether authorization was needed through council or not. And going back to ODOT, they said, yes, it needs to be done that way. Again, it will be for purchase, it's basically no match required, small amount, it's for two two-way radios, a transmission jack for the bus, so you can service it without having to crush your fingers, some fare boxes, and some passenger benches. I believe those are replacements. So that's, considering how long it's been sitting there and cooking, I think it's good that you're suspending it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, and thanks to Michael Lockman for moving forward different pieces and parts that put together the transit system. It's important for us in the rural areas. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 4115. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, nay. The ordinance is passed. Ordinance 4215, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a revolving loan fund administration agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Development and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. We talked briefly about possible programs that this could fund. However, we, even in order to garner those funds and do the spending, we need to go and have an administrative agreement with the state. So do you need a suspension on this?
Um, it'd be nice, I suspect. Let's see, once the date's starting, beginning January 1st, 2015, yeah, it could be.
So I ask for a suspension.
Second.
For the reasons the mayor just said. For the reasons that, yes, for needing to pass, move this along. So we have an ordinance, we have a motion and a second to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended. I move that we adopt 4215.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 4215. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Ordinance 4315 is an ordinance granting a revocable license to Tom Kostaric, InSource Inc. at 145 Columbus Road, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Great, thank you. These are actually renewals, and we talked briefly about this a few weeks ago, and the people have come forward. The code department has crossed their Ts and dotted their Is, and everything is now prepared. This and the next two are all basically signs in the city's right-of-way, and they're renewed for 10 years.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mayor Wile?
I would point out that this, it is a revocable license. We could pull it if need be, if we ever need that portion of the right-of-way. Part of Columbus Road is fairly wide in certain areas, and the signage, you know, has, was petitioned to be put on at least 10 years ago. And there's several, we have a rotating list of these, let's go back.
Okay.
And all of them are relatively small.
Yes.
Signs, so...
So this is good for it to review and to know that there are revocable. Okay. Ordinance 4415 is an ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Michael Deter, Athens Dental Depot, 80 Columbus Road, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way, introduced by council member Fall.
Same thing. I'll do it, Michelle. Same thing.
Ditto.
Ditto.
And I do have a question. Going back to 4315, the 145 Columbus Road, it does not contain the words granting renewal of, do we need that in that ordinance?
It is a renewal. We discussed these, so is that a typo?
Actually, I suspect this might be a new sign since the last one.
Okay.
I don't think that sign's been there that long.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So in other words, it's not, it's not a renewal because it's a new sign.
Got it.
Same place.
Okay. We'll move on to ordinance 4515, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Yes, council member Fall.
We had a presentation last week, week before last, from the chair of Athens Economic Development Council, and we discussed at length changing the contract to some degree. We fund the EDC, along with the university and the county. I think many on council want to include better metrics on that. I started looking at the contract, it did, if, the contract usually is renewed for two years, it should have been renewed in January for the next two years. I don't really want to rush a rewrite of it, I think that the next administration, whoever is voted next, needs to have input into this, so I would like to renew it until the end of the year, and then we can go from there and make it a better contract that addresses everybody's concerns.
Okay, sounds like it makes sense, and we'll strengthen the contract and the way, the method of the city interacting then with the development council. Ordinance 4715 is an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by council member Reisner. So, I'm sorry, I did need to do 46, excuse me, I'm going to jump for a moment. 4615 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for a community development block grant for program year 2015, introduced by council member Reisner.
This is going parallel with the, probably heard at our public hearing about 45 minutes ago, I believe the mayor stated that we may not go into an agreement, or we may not use this, but it'd be nice to have it in our toolbox, so that's why we're introducing this legislation. Is there any time constraint on this?
No, this has to be, deadline is June 26th, I believe.
Okay, then we have time.
Again, we still have two other public hearings, so to speak, so we'll have time to develop it, and again, the idea is to move it forward and see what shakes out for projects, and then make that evaluation whether we want to, you know, cash in our revocable loan fund or not. And that would be a decision, you know, we'll, we'll have that discussion along the way, depending on what comes up at the public's hearings.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 4715 is an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by council member Reisner.
Thank you, madam president. This is a, moving some money around from one account to another. Essentially, it, 2015 appropriation ordinance, oh, 120 dash 14, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance of following sums, $6,900, to Internal Service Fund, 865 TC 300, to cover costs of public stuff, mobile app, that really is the name stuff, and increasing the total appropriations by set amount and so on. This app that was discussed in committee, sounds to me like something that really is useful, and I think is something that the city should be getting into. I really like the, the idea that, okay, I find a pothole, and now I can stop, and I can take a picture of it, and I can submit it on the app, and it goes directly to the, to the office and the people who need to take care of potholes, and not to me at midnight, you know, a phone call, like, "Hey, do you see the pothole?" And, yeah, I'm aware of that. "Do you know it's midnight?" "Yeah, but that's okay." So I'm really excited about this for obvious reasons, so...
And I believe, mayor Wile, if I'm correct, this has also been vetted then through the different departments, Department of Public Works, code enforcement has looked at this and thinks that it would be a useful tool.
To my knowledge, yes. And again, this is really coming out of the internal funds, which cover all the different departments. The idea is it should mesh with the Iwork system that we have, I believe. We, in one sense, it's similar to, we do have a pothole reporting system on the web, but this will make it better for mobile apps, I think, for mobile systems.
And I think will then give us a GIS location, and once the picture is taken...
That's what I've been told. Again, I'm not, I'm not really particularly that tech savvy to this type of stuff, but...
Well, I think probably within eight weeks, I think, is when we'll see, begin to see operation of it, so, yeah. Thanks for moving forward. Once again, Scott Thompson doing a lot of legwork, and Ron Lucas helping move this forward. All right, that concludes the ordinances that we have for reading tonight. I will see if we have any other announcements, or I do know that we have a committee meeting next week, and so, yes, mayor Wile.
Do you have your infrastructure tour this Friday?
We do, at 10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. on Friday.
I think we want to get numbers for that, because the question will be, is, one bus can fit 18, 15 to 20, I think, and after that, you know...
And so confirmation of people who are attending is going to, to clerk of council, Debbie Walker, so if anybody is interested in touring, they do need to make that confirmation, let's say within, what, the next 20, 24 hours if possible, so we can have enough transportation for everybody. And it is, it's a great infrastructure tour, that gives a lot of history of the city, so... Is this Friday? Yes.
And it is open to the public.
And it is open to the public.
Can I...
Council member Butler.
Thank you. Can I confirm that we will be meeting here at the city building, is that correct, and loading the bus there?
Yes, out front. That's where it has every year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other announcements? If not, I'll entertain committee meetings that need to be held next week, I'm seeing planning and development from council member Fall, finance and personnel from council member Reisner. Okay, and service safety from council member Patterson. Thank you very much. We'll have a full slate. Our last agenda item before adjournment is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak before council? Thank you for attending. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Yes, sir.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting's adjourned at 7:57. Thank you.